Morning, everybody. I'll follow meeting to order. We have a forum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute. So I will second it. I have a motion to second. Is any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess we'll just wait on that, Steve Peterson. Rich, general road maintenance.
Rock right, I believe, is completed. We're done with that. And then also, the paving on the brush. They're done with the intermediate course. It's going to be a couple of weeks before we come back to the surface course. I may be issuing an addendum for one of our other two projects that are going to be collecting bids Friday by noon for the other ones. So I may throw an addendum, change the service mix. Nothing major there. I think good time to get the addendum out. So what we did last week is we took bids, what was it, on Thursday, by three o'clock on the box culverts. And then we, the ones that stayed wanted to know what the apparent low bidders were, so we did the apparent low bidders. Eight forty-five, we'll discuss. We'll do the same thing Friday with paving. Just kind of keep abreast of what's going on there.
All right, well, we'll be back here. Drainage claims. And there's drainage claims. Is there a motion to approve the drainage claim? I'll second that. I have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the claims. I'll second that motion. I have a motion to second to approve the claims. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on the claims. Are there any reports? We're going to payroll claim. You have payroll claims?
Yeah.
Who are they?
Well, it's just.
All right. Your motion to approve the payroll claim was a motion to approve the payroll claims. I'll second that. I have a motion to second to approve the payroll claims. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the reports. I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Reports approved. We approved these already, right?
No, it's different.
Okay. What happened, I'll explain that. It was that. I need a motion to approve the payroll on Kimberly Bowden.
Cody.
Cody. Sorry about that. And John Coyle.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. This one, just any place?
It's just, it's one year. I figured a salary and then backed it out to an hourly rate. Around thirty-five hours. I'm used to forty hours with the guy, so I messed up, so we needed to kind of change that to match the salary for what I planned on.
Okay.
That's why it's changed.
Change the salary here. Yeah. The other one's just fifty-seven. We have liquor license.
Two Fridays and a bowl of.
Winner, winner creek barn?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, oh, they're both the same.
Yeah.
Was that the stock tank?
I think so.
They're busy down there. Motion for the liquor license.
Oh. Oh, lantern lace. I have a motion to, and I'll second that motion on liquor license for the stock tank and lanterns and lace. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do I sign these on the back?
Yeah.
Any place? Next is the minimum hourly wages. If we go six percent, comes out at fourteen eighty-seven. And that's for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve that fourteen eighty-seven? So I'll second that motion. All of the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. FY twenty-four, I have renewal.
Okay, that one is, it's our annual. And there's all, there's a additional coverage that you can decide to take or not. It basically bumps up the excess liability by a million dollar increments. And it bumps up the premium from one thousand to three thousand dollars. I, I don't.
See a reason?
Not really. So.
Goes roughly a thousand dollars per million, right?
Yeah, which I don't know what at all. Hope we don't need it anyway, so I, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
So I was wondering if we could get that approved, then.
Or the limits you got, the higher limits they're going to.
Yeah, just a couple of places for you to sign, yeah.
Yes, my attitude on it, like you, yeah.
And you already.
Higher they're gonna go.
And you already approved the premium.
Right, so.
In the claim.
Yes. So we just need a motion to approve this as is.
Motion to approve, I cap as is.
I second that motion. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Must be. Need to get those to be ones.
Discussion possible action on contract number twenty twenty-four, period thirty-three, between Worth County, Iowa, and the Central Iowa tourism region. The contract in mind is for four hundred annually. And you pretty much know the services, or do you want me to read them to you? Is there a motion? To approve the contract between Worth County and the Central Iowa tourism region? I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There another one?
Yeah, one on them, yeah.
What's that?
Just one more on that. Well, I flipped it for you. No, you didn't miss it.
When were it back, Melissa, are you on? Can't keep track of it. Oh. No, she's, no, she's on, it's just she in California on vacation.
Could be.
There you go. Yep, she's gone. EMS, continue discussing. Got that meeting coming up Wednesday night?
Yep, idea.
That's in Hamlet Town. Is Rick Penland that is?
He's supposed to be.
In other words, do we need an agenda and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
I didn't see.
Send it to the trustees, and you could send those to.
I didn't see that. Send us that, okay?
Like I said, he's supposed to. I'll probably send him another message tonight, make sure, but.
Okay.
He's supposed to wind it up, ask who's available, he's, could be, be better checked.
That's all I got on it, too.
Yeah.
Because is it your meeting, or is it?
I don't know. I don't know.
It's, really, it's a workshop. I mean, more anything, we're not making any decisions there. We're just going to talk to him. Make the trustees aware that, you know, we might have to be looking at something, and then just fail.
As long as we got, yeah, it's just a workshop. There's nothing to be, as long as we got an agenda.
City council needs to be planning, proceeds need to be planning for the future.
Yeah, let's hope and get a good turnout.
We cannot fund it through the county.
We have people's, our department had discussions. I got about two minutes here, quickly.
I can cover Steve Peterson. He just texted me a work issue came up, but July twenty-nine, nine, nine AM is the triathlon. He's asking about sweeping the roads again. If you can get that done for him.
Give me a route.
Same as what it's been.
I'll look back and find out what that was.
Um, and then he's already talked to my guy on the help with law enforcement and that, so there's Steve's thing. He does apologize to not being. They did pull out Jesse's squad car from that deer hit, so I am working on getting, we're going to, right after this meeting, I'm going to Ford City to pick up one. And then I'm getting another one ordered. I'm having more of a holdup with parts up in Ellele, Lee are up in. Glenville, getting them to come out of there, waiting for parts to come in. I've got an explorer I thought would have been out this last week, still sitting there waiting on one part, so hopefully we'll get that going. Well, that's kind of my update.
Okay.
I have, through the OCIO, we're switching from FireEye to CrowdStrike. So I'll be having to visit all the computers here in a couple of weeks to get that. Your office has been on it for a while.
Okay.
All the other offices are not, so yes, yes. They first rolled that out with the auditors, and it's been an effective tool for their.
Okay. Um, so do we need to do anything with Steve Peterson as far as we? It just brought our attention and we back it.
Yeah. He took, he was thirty-six eleven, and we supported it. It's been a good deal with the community.
Yeah.
You know, we've. It is eight forty-five AM. I will recess the regular session. And I'll ask for a motion to open the bid letting hearing, so I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good letting hearing on Kansas twenty-six and Lincoln forty-two structure replacements.
So we're looking at approving the plans and specs and the method of bidding, I guess, is what it basically boiled down to. We'd hook. Hope you guys have any comments or questions, but I haven't received anything either. The bid letting was how we accepted bids on Wednesday by three PM. We had four bidders. The fifth one didn't get to bid in time. We got the bids, opened them, and let the individuals know who the apparent low bid was, reviewed the, the results. The apparent low bid was Ruggnus Brothers. The amount of total project cost between both the box culverts, five hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and twenty cents. Engineer's estimate was eight hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. The next lowest bid, though, was within four hundred dollars. So we had some pretty good bids come through there, and so they're the apparent low bidders. And I would recommend awarding the contract to Ruggnus Brothers.
Any comments or questions for anyone? In that case, I will close the public hearing, and I will re-. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing, and I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'll reconvene the regular session. And then the discussion, possible action. Is there a motion to approve Ruggnus Brothers? On both Kansas twenty-six and Lincoln forty-two?
Yeah.
Structure replacement. I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Go ahead. You're.
A resolution.
Okay.
You were pointing at him.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Approval of the construction of precast culvert replacements of Kansas twenty-six and Lincoln forty-two.
Technically, we already did.
And we already did this, so.
So I'm just doing one more, I'm doing just one motion on the resolution.
Okay. Then, then I will take a roll call. Smeeby?
Right.
Lober, aye. Motion carries. Oh.
We'll get the contracts and bonds sent out. And then write them to return, and once they return, we'll have another meeting.
We'll get that to, I signed it, so we can do it.
That is for you, should be.
Rich and I have been doing a little discussion, maybe bring it before the board. I had a request. I've been having a request ongoing for the last couple, three weeks, project going on out by one oh five towards Lake Mills. A guy is wanting to tile farm and to get an outlet. He's got two options, one to cross the road or one to run it down on the north side of the road. Down to the, or down to the creek, and he was wondering, basically, if we would pay for part of that tile down to the creek. Basically, the last was five hundred feet or so. I think, otherwise, he can run it down to this, another farmer's driveway. The farmers refusing, the other farmers refusing to participate. Don't want to put any dollars into it. It's going to be dumping basically right in his front lawn.
When you say front lawn, you mean the?
The road that he keeps mowed, and we just cleaned it here a year ago, and, and shaped it up again for him. So, anyway, it's just, and it's things, I think we're going to need policy-wise, because cuts going down, further down the road here, but roughly six thousand, right, seven thousand dollars, say, to put the last five hundred feet in, do it proper, all be below ground, won't affect the guy.
In other words, we don't want, we're not going to dump in the ditch.
No.
But it would cost the county more to go under the road.
It would cost more to order the road to go across than tie into whatever tile for those. It's, this is kind of a a non-standard, a non, it's, it's a different situation where we don't always, we sometimes get requests similar to this, but situations are a little different, so I wanted the board to make the decision on that, because sometimes it looks as though we're straining to do your practice and policy, but at the same time, it's saving tech pair of dollars to do something like this, and it's not the, 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 the county's required to provide an adequate outlet for grain tile. But in the instance here, it's, it's kind of a six and one half dozen in there to get the water outlet properly to, to the creek instead of just dumping the ditch and having a wet situation ditch all the time. Obviously, would, in this situation, I think the, the county would, should probably consider having some sort of a maintenance agreement with the tile, because typically parallel tiles are not owned by the county or meeting. So in regards to the extension, the, the remaining footage to get there, obviously, we want to have some, say, like, yeah, you might want to have a, something that says, yeah, we're, we're putting this in in lieu of a crossing, but in the end, since it's a parallel tile, it's yours to maintain. So.
That needs to have, or something.
Yeah, Jeff, write something up, probably, and then.
And bring it through a meeting.
Yeah.
I'm against dumping water, dumping it in the ditch.
In some instances, it's, it's, it's I don't know, we talked to the drainage engineers a little bit more. Some of these are a little bit more complicated than others when it comes to where to outlet water. There are some that dump in the ditch because it's an adequate outlet for them, and it doesn't drain, and a lot of them are in the roadway right of way where it's wrong, nobody's maintaining. Now, obviously, it, it's an option for a landowner to maintain the roadway right of way, but we try to work with people, too.
But it doesn't affect anybody's treatment district. If this goes anywhere, I feel correct.
So instead of dumping the ditch, we're gonna pile underneath the road, and then run parallel down. It won't even, it won't be on the road, it will be in the right of way. Yeah. And just right down the. A road crossing would probably cost twice as much as what the remaining footage of tile would cost to get it to the creek. And I mean, he can go either direction. I don't think you'd have any problem. Although, either way, it's probably like one. To do it proper, and like I say, I think, I mean, we're kind of, he was going to take it down so far anyway, and pay for that himself, and then, I mean, and he's got several options there. If he wants, he can just dump it right at the end of the field if he really wanted to, but if he doesn't want to do that, then.
Now, we're going to draw up a contract, just going to draw the contract that he has to maintain.
An agreement.
Yeah.
An agreement. On the whole thing, actually. Right, just so that everybody's clear on, we're in responsibility. We would pay for the last five hundred feet, and he's going to take care of the rest of it, but he has to maintain it going forward, so, the whole thing.
I don't see anything like that.
I don't either. No, I, I, yeah. It's just that, it's a, it's a non-standard practice, typically. I want the board to be involved in the decision-making. Little opposite way we normally do it. I mean, if you requested the crossing, we would have done it.
So next thing is get, get in the contract. Or I'll write next time.
Write something up. I can let the land, landowner know then, and then they'd be requested to find that, and I don't think that would be an issue. Yeah, and and then we also discussed during this process, we've been discussing road crossings in general, you know, how they pop up and budget-wise, and, you know, Rich said something, well, maybe we should just allocate X amount of dollars, and it's first come, first served. It'd be a policy going forward. In some counties, some counties will budget a certain, a certain figure for road crossings. It's a first come, first served basis, and then when the money is spent, they will say, okay, you can wait till next year for us to pay, or do it yourself. So it's something that maybe you want to look at in the future, what's the dollar amount, because we, we have a lot of drainage district costs, too, when it comes to crossings with culverts replacements. I mean, we've had years where we've spent over eight thousand dollars, almost a hundred thousand dollars, just in large drainage district repairs where the culverts are being replaced or taken down to a different elevation due to, due to future design, things like that, so it costs a lot of money, too, and you kind of want to.
And you can't really count that, huh?
Well, you know, you can't. So, I mean, in that regard, we would, but it's more private versus, it's mostly private versus drainage district to to kind of put a, a limit out there. Because for budgets, I don't know that, you know, and I, I'd have to go back and look and see how it's broken down.
You have a lot of private ones.
I know, we, we get a fair amount every year. If you're looking at, depending on whether they're crossing a highway or gravel road, the costs are significantly different. I mean, so, for example, this one here, being both, you know, if we did this, it's both twenty grand, and not really budgeted. You know, it's private crossing. We've put, we've put money in the budget for tile, but we never know how many we're, how many we're going to see in a year, so it's a matter of do we put a dollar figure on it and say, okay, this is where we're going to spend the money? After that, it's, you know, and I'll do a little bit digging around on companies that do actually do it. Because short of padding your budget, to protect yourself, I mean, there's, you know, and if it doesn't get used, you always get a little carryover, and so, you know, and it's strictly for that, so.
Right.
I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to other companies that do that with their tile processes, find out how they handle that versus how similar code reads. So.
Get an email.
Yeah, so we'll get that agreement written up then, and maybe I can make that an action item for next week or something. But we're, please, guys, contact Jeff then. For writing up an agreement. Well, maybe why don't you contact Paul, you want it written up, and basically, where did you want them? Yeah. That's your.
Yep. Anything else on, I think?
Oh, did you, did somebody clean that gravel up down by the quarry, you know? I stopped in there.
Okay.
And asked them to clean it up.
Okay.
Didn't stick around, but.
Yeah.
I didn't get that done. I think I got.
Okay.
When I got there, I'm like, how do you not see this? You know? I saw it, because when I got. Piled on your scale, and it trails right out to the highway. How do you not see that and take care of it? Well, I think, I understand, he went all the way to Ford City. But it slowed down. He stopped, and I think he might have taken the gravel across. When you got to the gravel intersection north of there, then he must have taken the gravel west. But I understood it sounded like maybe he got, because she was on the phone to somebody, and she said, yes, it went all the way to Ford City. It's a lot of losing your whole load there. Whoever paid for that one ain't going to be. I just, I. Okay, I appreciate. I stopped, and I asked him to take care of it. Yeah, I was going to ask if I needed to make a call, and I didn't get it to ask, because I was like, somebody needs to. Just say something. I'm busy. But I had to be out there anyway. I was looking. Okay. Great. Yeah. Did you make a decision, I know, I mean, on that curve there on signs, then, or? No, I was trying to figure out the sight distance thing. And trying to figure out actually what's happening. Our. Several accidents, I guess, down there by the quarry. Over by BMC, people must be having near misses and actually having accidents.
I was going to say, three nineties from Thrust is worse than BMC Brack.
But anyway, yeah.
But we've had a couple down there, but, but it's traffic pulling out of the quarry and making a loop to go back into the quarry. Basically, using the highway as somewhat of a haul route to get back into the quarry. And people coming from town, taking that curve, I mean, there's adequate sight distance. But I don't know what the thought is. If, I, I've heard, this is just hearsay, that some people try passing when they get to the quarry, and then that truck turns in, or they're just coming out and the truck's turning and it's going slower than they, I don't, I don't know what the whole situation is, and maybe you could elaborate more, but whether there's a no passing zone there or not, it still seems like there's, there's still some type of the rear ending semis, or are they, so, I mean, even a no passing zone isn't going to save the rear ending situation. I think there's got to be a better way of getting traffic in and out of the quarry.
I think there's gotta be a better way of getting traffic in and out of the quarry. Or some sort of. And I don't know whether it's the county's responsibility, I would say maybe not, but are, are we responsible for? You know, putting up a, uh, a warning sign, but at the same time, is it? I think there could be a way that. They could change how they route things through so that you're not crossing traffic. To get back in and out of the quarry.
Trouble is, they built that scale basically right on the road, I mean, you know, so if you're, you wanted to, if you're gonna have. Run it in and out like a no, normal scale, you come in and you turn around and come out. And so me, say, waiting to come on, if there's a truck, now I'm waiting on the road.
Right.
You know, and it, it is.
I think they probably did that to alleviate waiting on the road by saying this is a one-way scale, you wait in your yard to come through, but then you've got. You've got a loop backing out when you're empty.
I can see how the trucker, when he takes off empty, he wants to get loaded and get in out there, and he's not paying attention either, when he's. Cranking around there, and I mean, it's, they should have moved the back a hundred feet, and then they'd have a turnaround in their yard.
The other option for them is to put something at the scale that has warning of incoming traffic.
Yeah.
Or. That's, whether or not, I don't know who's at fault typically. But.
Failed yield upon entering a through highway. Would be the trucker from usually being.
And if, and if it's, if that's the case, then. You know. They should probably figure out a way to. Put some sort of a warning device up on there to let the truck, truck drivers know there's cars coming so that they can wait. And then move out or, or whatever, I mean. There's probably a simple solution. So that.
So they're out here.
I'm sure, no, I know they don't, yeah, I'm sure they don't. They don't like to stop, you know, and they wanna keep rolling, cause they're pretty loaded. I get it, but. With the empty trucks, you know, that's.
I think that's where most of it happens, is on empty trucks, not positive, but.
I would probably say it's when they're doing their turnaround to go on and get loaded more likely, but. I could be wrong. Or both ways, I suppose, if they pull out in front of somebody into the lane and.
I also, I don't know whether I'm that old, loaded or not loaded.
Yeah.
Anyway.
But I would, I would, I would think there's adequate sight distance there.
Oh, yeah.
For people to stop, I mean, you can see them when you get to four, three hundred and forty second street. To me, that's adequate time to slow down and, and avoid a click, if you're paying attention. But it all depends on when that, that truck pulls out, I mean, even, they could still be on the scale when you're at the intersection and.
Yep.
You're not expecting to pull out, and I don't know what their visibility is in the cab of a truck to look back and is, because you're looking back, is there.
Well, there's not enough.
A pillar, B pillar, B pillar, C pillar in the way that you can't see it.
Cause there's not enough room to pull off the scale and actually stop, you start pulling off. You're less than fifty feet from the road or thirty feet.
It is close.
It's right on the, yeah, literally right on the end of them. Well.
But I guess, I don't, I don't know, how, how the. Ticketing is going, is it, is it, is it usually the, the truck's fault to pull it out, or is it the car?
Correct. Okay. Alright, I'm just curious though.
Well, I mean, hopefully they try to manage that, I, I, I'll look at some things too and offer suggestions, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's kind of their livelihood to me, but. So. Alright.
Anything else for us?
Nope.
Anything else, Rich? Thank you. Um. Supervisor Weekly Reports, all I had was Worth County Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update, and that was. Pretty much an overview, a review of what they've done in the past and what they would like to do in the future, anything else, Mark?
No. Our next meeting will be sometime in August, we don't have the dates set yet, but.
That's a Zoom also.
That one should be a Zoom one, that'll be more into the. Doing the work of this plan.
Yeah.
I had juvenile tension down there at Eldora and, um. Just kinda went over the budget, and then, the, the new building is open finally, so that'll help some. Still got a little issue with taking care of kids down there. You know. You have murderers in with kids that are kind of a sticky situation, but, uh. I know one of the board members that looked into it. How many times they had actually had the sheriff department there to help get control and stuff, and hopefully the new building will. They're gonna put more of the violent offenders, I think, in the new side, or the old side, so hopefully that'll help. Well.
Okay. Um, is there anything we missed on there? Uh, next week's agenda items. Hey, they all, that all look good to me. Well, that's where we're. Bid letting hearing on three ninetieth and pro. Gotcha. Well, and this week we got EMS, and are you going to night, uh? On Thursday night?
I don't know, we're just.
Forty six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll see.
Okay. If there's anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn. So, I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.